I'll call to order the March 12th meeting of the Montgomery County Plan Commission.
Mr. Curle.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Sharp Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Simkins.
Here.
Mr. Walts.
Here.
Mr. Workman.
Here.
Mr. Lenkis is here. Vice Chair Foster.
Here.
Chair Rice.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And you have in front of you the agenda?
Second.
So the motion to, a motion of second for approval of the agenda, all those in favor, sign five percent aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. And then we have the consent agenda before you, which consists of the December 11th meeting minutes and the January 8th meeting minutes.
So moved.
So we have a motion of second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, sign five percent aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. And then we have a public hearing. So the first item before us is a request by Carriage Road LLC to rezone 1.571 total acres from agriculture A1 to traditional neighborhood development infill TD, TND1, with proffered conditions to allow a planned mixed-use residential and commercial development on property located at 1708 and 1714 Carriage Road. Mr. Cochran.
So yeah, we have a request for a rezoning from A1 to TNDI. You can see here with the vicinity maps, the property in question is located within the Reiner Village. And you can see on the map to the right, it is at the intersection of Carriage Road and Five Points Road. Here on the left, you can see an aerial imagery, aerial, aerial image of the property showing an existing church structure as well as a single-family dwelling. And there is a parking lot out front. In the rear of the property, it is a grass yard. There is a cemetery located in the yard behind the church. The image to the right is the zoning map. You can see that currently the, the surrounding area of the, of the subject property is zoned agricultural. So background on the request, the subject parcels were originally developed as a church, but ultimately ended up without a religious organization to occupy the space. And in May, uh, May of 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved a special use permit for a contractor's storage yard to operate on the property. The property is currently unoccupied. And as I, as I mentioned before, a cemetery is located in the rear of the property. The request, the property owner and potential tenant met with planning staff to propose the mixed-use concept that would include a community center, coffee shop, and a soccer practice facility. Planning staff and applicants found that the traditional neighborhood design infill zoning district best suited their proposal's needs while also being appropriately, appropriately located within the Reiner Village. So the request, as I mentioned, is for a coffee shop. The coffee shop is intended to serve as a community hub, offering a welcoming atmosphere where residents can get coffee, gather, socialize, or work. The coffee shop will also support the soccer club by donating a portion of its proceeds, providing a fundraising platform. The coffee shop will typically operate from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Also, the, the main use of the property will be a community center. The community center will host a variety of programs, including after-school activities, educational workshops, art classes, civic events, and other similar types, types of events. The applicant intends to partner with local organizations and businesses to maximize the center's offerings and strengthen its ties to the community. For the soccer training facility, this will be an accessory use to the, uh, to the community center. The space will also offer a location for a local soccer club to provide year-round programs to players, including clinics, camps, and leagues. This location was sought out to provide a more localized soccer facility so the athletes and families will not have to travel as far to other practice facilities in the region. The facility will mainly offer indoor instruction within the main building onsite, but the applicant does plan to construct an outdoor practice, practice facility onsite in the rear of the property. This was not included in the application, but the TNDI zoning district does allow for, allow and encourage mixed uses as well as commercial and residential uses. So they could potentially use that existing single-family dwelling onsite as a residence. The existing single-family dwelling onsite previously used as a church parsonage could potentially be used for residential purposes. Long-term rentals or live-in units for the employees of the onsite business would be possible if so desired by the applicant. Short-term tourist rentals and bed and breakfasts would not be permitted within the residential dwelling. Here you can see a site plan proposed by the applicant. Let's see. You have some additional landscaping proposed along the frontage of Carriage Road. There is a dumpster enclosure, enclosure to be added to the west of the property. In the back, you can see the rough area of where the soccer facility will be. And they are also proposing to add additional landscaping as a additional buffer from adjacent properties and uses. And I believe they plan to promote and honor the existing cemetery with additional site improvements as well. Here you can see a floor plan of the proposed structure and how it will be modified to allow for the community center and the soccer facilities. You can see the, the main, main building will be for, used for the training area. You can see here, a lot of the coffee shop operations will be taking place in the front of the building. And then just classrooms and other associated rooms will be in the rear of the property or the building. Here is a view of both structures in relation to each other. You have the main, the main principal structure as well as the single-family dwelling to the left, as well as the parking lot. Again, here are images of the two structures from the road. Here on the left is an image of the rear yard. You can see that there is a little bit of a slope to the rear yard. And then to the right, you can see some of the, the grave sites in the rear yard. Here is some images of the parking lot and the existing monument sign that is available. And to the right is just another photo of the property from the intersection of Carriage Road and Five Points Road. Impacts, the property provides two points of ingress and egress, one connecting to Carriage Road and one connecting to Five Points Road. The property offers ample off-street parking totaling approximately 55 spaces, including ADA spaces. VDOT takes no exception to the approval of the rezoning request. The property is currently served by public water and sewer. No portion of the site locate, is located within a FEMA floodplain. As I mentioned, the trash enclosure will be located onsite. No significant changes or improvements are proposed on the site. As I mentioned earlier, the applicant does intend on constructing an outdoor soccer practice facility in the rear of the property. Any proposed structures or grading that may take place will require appropriate review and permits from county staff. The proposed concept includes additional landscaping to provide a better buffer between the proposed uses and adjacent properties. A full review for all, with, for compliance with all erosion sediment control standards. Stormwater requirements and landscaping are provided during the site plan review. The proposed project will operate primarily during daytime hours. Some special events or extended practices could extend beyond daytime hours, but are expected to happen infrequently. The proposed uses may increase the amount of noise generated on the site. All noise conducted on the site will have to comply with the county noise ordinances. Again, vegetative buffer and additional landscaping will aid in decreasing the impact of noise on adjacent properties. The applicant does not propose any exterior lighting at this time, and if they do, it will have to adhere to dark sky-friendly standards. As I mentioned before, there are, there is an existing cemetery located on the subject property, which is to be respectfully maintained and preserved by the applicant. Pathways, signage, and landscaping will be added to honor and protect the site's heritage. For the comprehensive plan, this property is located within the village expansion within the comprehensive plan. Furthermore, in the Reiner Village and is designated as mixed use. It is encouraged, uh, mixed-use developments are encouraged as well as the redevelopment of existing sites as well as live-work units. A mix of appropriately scaled residential, non-residential, and community uses are anticipated in village expansion areas. The, they encourage entrepreneurship and small business startups by, by county residents, including industrial, commercial, commercial tourism-based, recreational, and agricultural enterprises. They also, the conference plan also hopes to attract new and retain existing businesses and industries that can be, best create viable job opportunities for all. Expand the local tax base and maintain those qualities that make the county a highly desirable place to live and work. So for analysis, the proposed rezoning request meets a number of the planning and land use goals for the village expansion as outlined in the 2025 Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan. The proposed rezoning provides another commercial resource to the Reiner Village by occupying existing underutilized structures. The proposed use establishes a new business in Montgomery County, contributing to the county's economic and creating economy and creating jobs for the community. And VDOT takes no exception. Staff recommends approval of the request to rezone 1.571 acres from A1 to traditional neighborhood development infill to allow a mixed-use development. The adjoining property owners were notified in accordance with Montgomery County Code. The public hearing sign was placed at the property. The legal ads were run in the news messenger. Staff has received one comment from the public, which is provided to the planning commission. And any additional comments may be received during the public hearing. Are there any questions for staff? The applicant is also here for any questions.
What about proffered conditions? The advertisement mentions proffered conditions. Do we have any spelled out?
I believe that might have been a typo. I don't believe there are any ty, there, there are no proffered conditions.
And then one other item. We said that the short-term rentals and being, is that specifically disallowed by the TND?
It is, it is.
Okay, it's not proffered conditions, it's just not allowed.
Yes.
Mr. Cochran.
Yes.
You have multiple uses.
Yes.
You talked about the coffee shop being open 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. What are the days of operation for this facility as a whole? Seven days a week?
I'll leave that up to the applicant, but I believe so.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question also. Jude, this would not be subject to a site plan review, correct?
Uh, it depends, potentially for the landscaping as well as for depending on the scale of the, the facility that they've built in the rear of the property, depending on if they decide to do any significant grading or anything like that.
But as, as it's presented now, there's no definition for what the landscaping that's proposed for the site. Was there any discussion with the applicant about what would make sense to provide adequate screening, screening for the adjacent properties?
So they would have to meet the typical buffer yard requirements that's required in the zoning ordinance.
But that would be through a site plan submittal, so, or is that part of a zoning permit? If there's no conditions in the special use permit, where are those buffers defined?
Uh, so the buffers would be defined within the county ordinance, but it could also just be a landscaping plan that could be provided to us during the zoning permit process.
Okay, so I guess my question is, will something be submitted to county staff for review and approval regarding the buffer landscape? Okay, thanks, thank you.
Any further? Thank you, Mr. Cochran.
All right.
Would, would the applicant like to speak? Do you give us your name and address, please?
Is that name and address? Did you say name and address?
Yeah, name and address.
Adam Ritchie, I'm at, my address is 425 Teresa Lane in Roanoke. So I have five coffee shops at the moment, and I coach at Auburn High School. So in the area, being here for the past six years, noticed there's not a place really, and I run the soccer club between basically Floyd, Bradford, all the way down to Abingdon. But there's not a, a big community place in the Reiner area where people, adults, kids can come and hang out and, and have a place to go. And that's kind of what our coffee shops do. And then in that, with the facility tying in some indoor training and that kind of stuff, but having classrooms, being able to, if yoga teachers want to come in, stuff like that, they could do. We will not be grading in the back. We're not going to do that. If we did build anything, it would be, the space is not very big. I know it looks much bigger on this picture, but it's really small. It would be just a little personal training space is what it would be. It would not be a whole facility where there's games and stuff going on. Indoor, where the pews are in the church, that would be an indoor field to play on, probably four v. four or five v. five. So it's not, it's not a huge space for that. So that's kind of what we are looking at. Not really changing much of the outside. It would just be the renovations on the inside and.
Okay, um, I had a question. You said it was going to operate from seven to six?
The coffee shop, well.
The coffee shop.
Typically the coffee.
Right, but the community center would be open?
Later, usually.
Do you have hours in mind with that?
I mean, in a, we have shops in some small towns too, so usually they shut down pretty early.
Right.
I wouldn't think after eight o'clock really because teams aren't training.
That's what I'm, okay.
Yeah, they're not training out late and kids, youth kids usually are not out too late.
Okay.
So it would not be.
Till eight, but seven days a week?
Typically, it will be open seven days a week.
Right.
And, and most of that indoor space stuff for the training would be more winter.
Okay.
Especially with the.
Especially with the properties being built across the street.
Okay.
You know, we could take advantage of some of those rentals there.
Okay.
And then the housing, we would house our coaches there.
Okay.
So we have coaches that move into the area and give them a place to live.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone that would like to approach the commission, now would be the time to do so. Oh, I'm sorry. Give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Hi, I'm Judah Dean. My address is 3920 Reiner Road. It was the top-left house on the map, adjacent property. I also am the one who submitted a written comment, and I'm very grateful that Adam responded very quickly, but it raised some more questions. So, you know, he just described a little bit more, but he said that the outdoor soccer field would actually be a small training space for coaches to work with players one-on-one and rarely used, but that differs from the description in the application, as he just mentioned, which calls it a soccer field, depicts a whole field, talks about activities like adult pickup games, and lists community center hours from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I'd like to know more about the time that the outdoor space would be available for use, so that I can make sure that I also get to enjoy a little slice of peace in my own backyard. I understand that that space will also require a little bit more planning based on what I just heard. But I also raised a few other concerns beyond noise, like privacy. The landscaping on the map is not sufficient for privacy, so I'm curious to learn more about that as well. I'm also a little concerned about potential damage to the cemetery or our property from soccer balls. And I'm solutions-focused, so I had suggested a quieter outdoor athletic space, something like yoga classes, space for meditation, or like strength training and obstacle course. And then pair that with a community garden to honor David Reiner, who rests in that cemetery on that site. He was a devoted farmer and is the person for whom Reiner was named. Profits from selling the produce could be donated to local sports teams to stay aligned with the coffee shop's mission. And I also offered to donate my own resources, seeds, and labor. I love gardening, so happy to get involved with the community center. If it's truly meant to be a community center, I encourage the owner and the tenant to uplift the feedback from the people literally in your backyard and integrate us into your design. If it's actually intended to be an athletic center, under a more palatable name of a community center, then I think between the fields at the schools and the new Reiner Park with several multipurpose fields, those needs are a lot closer to being met than broader community enrichment activities. So instead of another athletic facility, I would like to see this space become what's outlined in the Reiner Village Plan, which is a community center and a public library, so that the community center truly serves people of all ages and abilities and meets the needs that are outlined in a plan that was created for and with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Calvin, do we have a Calvin? Would you like to come forward?
Yes, sir.
If you state your name and address.
My name's Calvin Dean. I also live at 3920, you know, so we share, we would share 161 feet of our fence with the backyard, I guess, of the church. Or I suppose the former church. I'm going to piggyback on a few things that he said, but my concern was more that, you know, Reiner's demographics are, the age range of people who would be utilizing the soccer camp, it is like, you know, I would say like zero to three, give or take. And that accounts for 31% of the population in Reiner versus the 30 to 60 range is more than half, you know, is 56%. And there isn't much catering to that crowd. So again, like he said, there's, you know, Reiner Park is going in right up the street within like not even walking, like shouting distance. And they have two multipurpose, multi-use fields. They have, I believe, four softball, baseball diamonds. They have walking trails. It's going to be right across the street, basically. And the schools themselves, you know, Reiner is a one and a half square foot village. So we have to pack a punch with what we put in there, and so much of the landscape is already sort of predominantly catering to the schools, or like it's the school campus or the school itself. And then with the addition of Reiner Park, I thought, you know, that could sort of alleviate that need, but that middle age range doesn't, it doesn't have, like, anybody can use the library. You know, anybody can use a community garden. It just feels sort of more nonspecific and therefore appeals to more people. So the use of the term like "community" is very, it's very heavy in the application, but the reality of what the community is, is that, is more like that middle age bracket that there isn't a whole lot going on for. So if it's going to be, again, if it's going to be a community center, it should be something that is much more sort of general purpose and nonspecific. The, I also have some concerns about, there's also a coffee shop going in right up the street in spring, summer this year, across from Sinklin Farms. So it would be, I think, a mile or so from that, the same location. And they're also using an already-built, like it's an old house that had been empty, so it's kind of the same like idea. But there is, it would be kind of taking business away from that, too. There, we would go from having no coffee shops to suddenly having two within like a mile of each other with very much the same purpose.
We'll let you finish up your thought, but time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Essentially, the use of the outdoor space concerns me because of the extreme slope of the land, and I want to make sure the whole community is being served instead of just sort of like more things for that same age bracket. And then if there, if this does come to fruition, the, I know it specifically says in the application that no changes will be made to the parking lot, but the parking lot is actually in very, very, very bad shape. So I would propose that we give a facelift, you know, repaint some of the lines and things because they're, the parking spaces are quite indistinguishable.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comment. Thank you. If someone else would like to speak, give us your name and address.
Kevin Connor, 4145 Stanley Road. Wasn't prepared to speak to this tonight, later in the session, but I just want to encourage planning commission to support this. Mr. Ritchie and I go back several years. He taught my son soccer for two or three years and great motivator, so I just want to encourage it so he could have that opportunity. So, thank you.
Would anyone else like to approach the commission? Seeing none, I will close the public address portion of our public hearing and move into comments, discussion, action. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. It seemed like, to me, it seemed like a good use of this property. It's an existing building, not a lot of changes to the outside. And with the new practice fields coming that are public, this would be a way for private instruction and so forth. I think it'd be, serve the community well. So yeah, I'm in favor of it. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion for approval, a motion and second for approval.
Sir, Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Simkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walts?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Linkus?
Yes.
Vice Chair Foster?
Yes.
Chair Rice?
Yes. So unanimous, and that'll go before the board next? Do we have a date for that?
We do. I'm looking to staff to help me out. We have so many requests that we're juggling right now. This one goes to the board. April 14th is when we will be at the Board of Supervisors for public hearing.
Thank you, Bree. Our second public hearing this evening is a request by J. William Colbert II Declaration Trust and Joanne Bandy Colbert Declaration Trust for a special use permit to allow a short-term tourist rental within an existing single-family dwelling and attached accessory dwelling on property located at 1480 and 1482 Clay Street.
Please. Thank you. Good evening. On the left, we have the vicinity map with the star that shows the general area of the request. And on the right, we have a zoomed-in version of that, which is located just near the Town of Blacksburg jurisdictional line. On the left, you see we have an aerial photo that shows the location of the two dwellings. And you can see that it is surrounded by vacant wooded property. And on the right, we have the zoning map, which shows that the property, shows the zoning of the residential of the properties, and then it also shows the RM1 property in the blue, which is the townhomes located adjacent. The request tonight that we have before you is to allow a short-term tourist rental within an existing three-bedroom primary single-family dwelling, as well as an attached two-bedroom accessory dwelling. The property was unknowingly in violation of zoning codes and building codes when it was purchased by the current owner in November of 2024. When the applicants received notice of violation, they immediately contacted staff to work toward bringing the property into compliance. The definition of a short-term tourist rental is a single-family dwelling or portion thereof located on an individual lot that is rented for compensation to short-term transient guests. The operator does not live on the same parcel or on an adjacent parcel. Outlined in the supplemental regulations that are required to be met before zoning permit can be issued for any short-term tourist rental, which includes limiting the number of occupants, parking provisions, property boundaries must be clearly marked, no evidence of short-term tourist rental can be on the outside of the structure, no signs identifying the property as a short-term tourist rental. It must meet all fire, all requirements of the Virginia State Fire Prevention Code, provide property management plan to mitigate impacts on adjacent property owners, a posted emergency evacuation plan for both the dwelling and the neighborhood, a copy of the Montgomery County noise ordinance must be posted, a connection to local phone service is required or proof of, and all outdoor burning is to be in compliance with county codes. Here you see a floor plan of the dwellings. The one that's highlighted in purple is the two-bedroom dwelling, and the one that is highlighted in orange is the three-bedroom dwelling, along with the fire evacuation routes noted in red arrows. Here we see the parking designation for the dwellings. There are three spaces designated for the smaller dwelling and four spaces designated for the larger three-bedroom dwelling. This, this shows, and along with some of the photos that are coming up, it shows that there is ample parking at the site. The dwelling is shown on the left with all of its parking, and it kind of highlights the wooded buffer that surrounds the back and the sides of the property. On the right is the rear yard with a seven-foot privacy fence that provides privacy for each of the dwellings. On the left is the three-bedroom primary dwelling, and on the right is the two-bedroom attached accessory dwelling. On the left is the entrance into the property, which is noted by a small sign there, and that road is going towards state maintenance, the end of state maintenance. On the right, that picture shows the exit sign from the property, and the view is looking towards the Town of Blacksburg limits. This is taken from near the house and shows the ample parking and the view going toward the exit. And then the photo on the right is the view entering the property, along with the ample parking. Some of the impacts that have been identified is that the dwellings are located approximately .07 miles from the end of state maintenance. Traffic impacts will remain minimal, resulting in no greater intensity in traffic than the current impact is to residences. Ample parking is available, and there are enter and exit accesses with, that will limit move it on to Clay Street. VDOT took no exception to approval of the special use permit. The property is not located in a FEMA flood hazard area, excuse me. The dwellings are served by public water and public sewer, so there is no septic system that will limit the number of occupants. However, the number of bedrooms and the applicant has limited the number of occupants. The lot has a natural wooded buffer along the rear and sides of the property. The dwellings have a seven-foot privacy fence in their rear yard separating the dwellings for privacy. Fire safety will be addressed during the zoning and building permitting processes. Gatherings and parties will not be allowed. Pets will not be permitted. The property is self-managed, and they do have a local caretaker. The tenant must be 25 years of age and shall be present during the entire term of the rental. And the applicant has identified quiet hours are from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. The comprehensive plan identifies this parcel as residential transition, which encourages stable, low-density residential neighborhoods in close proximity to municipalities, and areas include undeveloped land that has been previously zoned for residential development. There are three goals in the comprehensive plan that will be supported by approval of this permit, including planning and land use goals, cultural resource goals, and economic resource goal. The proposed use meets regulations as outlined in the supplemental regulations. The proposed use remains residential with no more impacts than a full-time residence comparable to traditional occupancy. Ample parking is available. VDOT takes no exception, and the Town of Blacksburg has voiced no concerns. So staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow a short-term tourist rental within the existing primary dwelling and the attached accessory dwelling on property located at 1480 and 1482 Clay Street with the following conditions. Occupancy shall be limited to four occupants at 1480 Clay Street and shall not exceed six occupants at 1482 Clay Street. The property shall be registered with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office for meals and occupancy taxes. Any applicable permits must be obtained from the Building Department, and all requirements in Montgomery Code Section for short-term tourist rentals shall be met prior to the issuance of the zoning permit. All adjoining property owners were notified in accordance with Montgomery County Code Section and Code of Virginia. A public hearing sign was posted on the property. The legal ads were published in the local newspaper. Staff has received no comments from the public regarding this request. However, additional comments may be perceived during tonight's public hearing. The applicant, Ms. Colbert, is here for questions, and I am available for any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Shelley? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Would the applicant like to speak? Okay. Okay, so I will open this up, open up the public hearing, open up the public address for this public hearing. Anyone would like to speak? Anyone who would like to speak, please come forward. In seeing none, we will close the public address portion and open up to the commission And I'll mention that any motion should include the four conditions as well.
Mr. Chairman, I think it makes a whole lot of sense, and it seems to be well thought out, and the four conditions are not onerous.
Was that a motion?
So moved with conditions.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for approval with the four conditions. Any further discussion? Seems like a well-thought-out plan and, and fits the area, so I have no problem. Mr. Linkus, if you'll call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Crowell.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Sharp Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Simkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Linkus, yes. Vice Chair Foster.
Yes.
Chair Rice.
Yes. Yes, okay. So that ends the public hearing, but we also have a public address portion of our meeting. If anyone would like to approach the commission about any relevant topic, we'd be glad to hear from you at this time. In seeing none, we will close the public address portion, and we will enter into a work session.
Mr. Chairman, second.
So I got a motion and second to enter into work session. All those in favor signify a percent aye.
Aye.
And those opposed likewise. And so we are in a work session to discuss the request by Shaw Development for a special use permit to allow contractor storage yard on Flanagan Drive.
Thank you. Yeah, so we have a contractor storage yard for work session before us. I know several of you made a site visit out there earlier this afternoon. You can see the location of the property is just outside of the Town of Christiansburg town limits on Flanagan Drive. It is in eyesight of Interstate 81, and on the picture to the right, you can see an aerial image of the property with the existing structure on site. It is for Shaw Developments, storage of their equipment and materials. That's basically the gist of that.
Yes, so we were there after, for a site visit. Commissioners have any questions or concerns, comments? It seemed like the building itself is buffered by the amount of land that's around it. There's no development around it, and the building is centrally located on the parcel, have a high bank around the backside, you know, that people on the backside wouldn't be upset. Please.
I do have, I guess, a question for clarification. So the, the yellow outline here, is that the actual tax parcel?
It is correct, yes.
Is the subject of the application?
Yes.
And so the adjacent parcels, I know they are owned by the same property owner, but they're separate parcels. Access to this parcel, is there any kind of, there's no frontage to this parcel. Is that an issue?
It is not, no.
So that, there's just access by virtue of the property owner owning the property that's adjacent to it?
Yes.
So it's a non-conforming lot now?
In terms of frontage, yes.
I don't have any problems with the proposal. I was just curious about the configuration. I hadn't seen this map before, so I was wanting some clarification. Thank you.
So to keep going with that, from the cul-de-sac to this property, it would be an easement, access easement recorded? Or I guess if, if it's the same owner, it doesn't need to be recorded easement now, but...
So Kevin Connor with Shaw Development. We've done a few boundary line adjustments on this part, on the property before, and this, you're allowed one lot to not have street frontage, but it also, it has a 40-foot access easement to it, so that's, that exists.
Okay.
So that, when you have one that doesn't have frontage, you have to have an access easement, and this, this parcel does have.
I didn't see any reference to that on this map, so that...
Yeah, it's, it's a recorded document.
Gotcha. Perfect. Thank you.
Question about the status of Flanagan Drive. Could you describe that for me?
It is state-maintained to a point, but that, and that is the cul-de-sac. I believe that's before it touches this property. So it is state-maintained to the cul-de-sac.
And is it also a portion of Interstate 81?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I think the right-of-way for I-81 comes up to Flanagan.
It is a frontage road for 81.
It is a frontage road for 81.
Thank you.
So in work, we're in work session. Any commissioners, any, commissioners see any problems that might crop up? Okay. Then we'll have a motion to leave work session?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and second to leave work session. All those in favor signify a percent aye.
Aye.
And those opposed likewise? And then we will move, we don't know, I have any old business listed, and then, so we'll move into new business, and it's got the 2025 liaison appointments, and...
Yes, so it's that time of year again where we appoint liaisons to the various committees. We have everyone listed here as to the current committees that they have volunteered to serve as liaisons, and basically, we just want to confirm that you are still comfortable with this or give you the opportunity to make any changes if you desire.
Andrea, you still okay with the Blacksburg planning? Okay. And the Christiansburg planning, I'll try to keep abreast of that with some help from Trey. And Radford Planning Commission is Ms. Simkins? Okay, keep track of that. And Tourism Council, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And then Parks and Recreation with Mr. Workman? Okay. And then, I guess that's all we have listed at this time.
Yes, since we have public service authority on here, it's a good time to mention, you may see Mr. Grafsky is here this evening. He and Supervisor King are going to alternate, come into the Planning Commission this year, so you might see one or the other of them. Mr. Grafsky is here tonight, and I believe Mr. King said he would be here next week. So they are, they are alternating off.
Okay, sounds good. And then, so we will move into the liaison reports, and first would be the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Grafsky, if you have a report or comment? And you also cover the public service authority as well.
That's correct. That's correct, and we did not meet this month, so I don't have anything for the PSA. This, we're in the thick of the budget right now, so that's the big update from the Board of Supervisors. Like Ms. Hopkins said, Mr. King and I will be taking turns on this. I have another board commitment, the third Wednesday of each month, so if you guys meet on the second month, second Wednesday, I'll be here. If there's a third Wednesday, that, that's when Mr. King will be here. Yeah, that's, that's the big update for us, is diving into the budget, so we just had that presented to us on Monday evening, and we'll, we've got a joint work session with the school board on Monday, this coming Monday, the 17th, and I think we're going to meet every Monday for the next four to six weeks, so more updates to come. All right, thank you. Any questions or anything?
Questions?
All right, appreciate y'all. Thank you.
And Andrea?
So if you guys saw the news, Blacksburg Board of Supervisors approved yesterday 4:03 to build the eight-foot, eight-story building at the corner where, across from Ace Hardware, where Hebner's used to be. I mean, I have my own thoughts about that, but that's the, that's the biggest thing right now that's happening in Blacksburg.
Thank you. And Christiansburg Planning Commission, Trey might have to help me out with this, but we believe there's a developer that has developed some property at the end of Summit Lane, 60 single-family houses, is what I'm hearing, and I don't know if it's been approved yet, but I think that's what they're working on. With the county, that's right. Have you heard about that? Do you know what's going on with that, Bree? Boundary line adjustment?
I know that it was brought forth to the Board of Supervisors under consent agenda. I think it has passed, so it has, has went on to the town.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it looks like some single-family houses may not be coming.
It was voted on last night.
Okay.
Yes, I think it was voted on last night. The rezoning was approved, but this conditional use permit for the 60 additional houses was denied.
So they could do R1 by right.
R1 by right.
Oh, by right, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for your input. And Radford Planning Commission, Ms. Simkins?
Yeah, the last meeting I attended, I can't, I think it was January, because they had some canceled in February. They did have two special use permits. One was, they're based real simple, to demolish a older house and replace it with a duplex. And the second one was to approve a business in the lower level of a home that already had a business, so those were approved by the Planning Commission to go to the next step. And then I talked to them this week, and they're canceling this month's meeting, so there won't be one, but they did say that they will be attending the regional meeting coming up, which I know is on your agenda there to speak of, but that's all I have.
Thank you. And the Tourism Council, Mr. Miller?
Met earlier this week, and I was unable to attend.
Okay, thank you. And the Parks and Recreation, Mr. Workman?
We'll meet tomorrow.
Okay. And so then that leaves us with the Planning Director's report. Ms. Hopkins?
Yes, so I have a couple of things to update you. We are going to be conducting interviews this coming week for a GIS analyst, so we have a couple of people to interview. I have one I'm still waiting to hear from. Hopefully, that will get us back up to full staff in our GIS department. Please remember to RSVP for the April 16th Regional Planning Commissioners Training that will be held here as normal, beginning at 5:30 PM, and then we will go into training. So the weather has given us the great gift of two meetings in March, so we will be meeting next week, March 19th. You have a few things on your agenda. The packet has been posted to Board Docs, so you should have full access to that. It will be a full meeting, meaning we will be starting with a site visit. We will be touring a large part of the Father and Gay property, so they are going to have the cattle gates open. We will be able to take the four-wheel drives and walk back there, just make, or drive back there, and then walk around once we get out of the vehicle at various spots. Please make sure you have appropriate footwear. We want everyone to be safe. And then we will have dinner and then begin the meeting back here. The other thing with that said, we do have a request that has garnered a lot of attention, and so you probably should have seen the email from me yesterday. If you receive an email, if you could forward that to us in the Planning Department, the reason is we've already had one email that was sent to, to a few Planning Commission members, but not the others, so we want to make sure that these emails get put in the packet so all Planning Commissioners can see them. They also forward on to the Board of Supervisors, so we want to make sure the Board of Supervisors gets everyone's comments as they are received as well. So if you could just remember to check your emails, the emails that were distributed, some of them were county emails, but then I noticed a couple of them had emailed like private emails, so I'm, I'm not sure where the, the sources were from when they sent the email, but just be sure that you are checking your county email, because that is the official email that we have posted on our website. I believe that is all I have.
Thank you.
Bree, have you sent out the RSVP yet to, for the April?
We have not sent anything out yet, but if you, I think we might have sent out a save the date, but if you will let us know next week, if you can attend that, we will make sure to get everyone registered for the April 16th.
And what time does it start?
It starts at 5:30 here.
Okay.
That is in lieu of the, the meeting that would happen on the third Wednesday, yes. You are still going to have a meeting on April 9th, and it's a full schedule as well. We have several requests in right now.
Okay. Anything further? Any comments? Motion to adjourn? Motion and a second? Second, Bob? All those in favor signify a percent aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.